That we're having at the moment.
Yes, ma'am, I will. So around 3:00 PM this afternoon, when I went to do a recording, the, we noticed that the audio was not working. We did have our, the media production team came in to do a sound check and they realized that the By Amp was not working properly. So our meeting will not be aired tonight on DTN, the website, or YouTube. We will be recording it and it will be uploaded tomorrow. We will have an update to the board tomorrow as well with regards to future recordings.
Okay, thank you. So apologies to everyone for the technical challenges that were happening and happening and we are going to do, do the best that we can with these circumstances. And thank you. I know everybody has been trying to address the issue. Welcome, everyone, to the Monday, August 10th, 2020, meeting of the Durham County Board of Commissioners. The time is now 7:02. I will share the public charge. The Board of Commissioners asks its members and citizens to conduct themselves in a respectful, courteous manner, both with the Board and fellow citizens. At any time, should any member of the Board or any citizen fail to observe this public charge, the Chair will ask the offending person to leave the meeting until that individual regains personal control. Should decorum fail to be restored, the Chair will recess the meeting until such time that a genuine commitment to the public charge is observed. As a courtesy to others, please turn off your cell phones and mute yourself during the meeting unless you are speaking. We will now do the, the Pledge of Allegiance together. So, you know, some of us are, are here visibly, Commissioner Recau and Commissioner Howerton can join. Everyone else can, can join in as well. We'll, we'll see how this goes. If not, we may just try for a moment of silence, but we'll try it with the Zoom meeting and doing the Pledge of Allegiance. So we'll start together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Are there any agenda adjustments this evening? Moving on to the announcements, updated census deadline. We now must complete the 2020 Census by September 30th. There is now less time to complete the census. The date has been pushed up a month from the original date of October 31st. Durham County currently has the lowest response rate in the triangle at 57.7%. Our goal is 82%. Please help spread the word and complete the census by visiting www.my2020census.gov. And Deborah, look, you're there already. You knew I was gonna be looking for you. We know this is really, really important. Please let us know, you know, your thoughts. I know you have been working so hard. The whole team has been working so hard. And I know all of our Board is ready to do whatever we can do to help, but let us know. We need to mobilize.
You are absolutely correct. Yeah, we were very disappointed when we got that email last week from Stephen Dillingham, who runs the Census. And so we basically lost a month. We actually had events planned for early October into the end of the month. So we're actually meeting tomorrow to redo our schedule and refocus our energies and to see what we can do, even in the age of COVID, to get out the word about how important it is because we're talking about losing money over a 10-year period, important, critical money to help fund our community, money for roads and food and nutrition services and school lunches and Head Start and medical needs and an airport and roads. And so again, this is money that our residents need, our community needs. And the other issue is North Carolina is on track to get another representative in Congress. And so if we don't have a good count, that's not gonna happen for us. Right now, we're actually below where we were at this time in 2010. And of course, a lot of that has to do with our situation with the pandemic. But again, we have got to muscle all of our energy and get the word out to our entire community that everyone counts and everybody needs to fill out the census. It only takes 10 minutes. There are only a handful of questions. The answers confidential for 72 years. And again, we must do this for our community.
Thank you, Deborah. And is, do we need to allocate additional resources? Do you feel like we need to look at, you know, just paying our residents and mobilizing people in the community? You know, whatever it takes. I mean, just let us know as a Board, really, if you, you know, need to bring something back to us in two weeks, October 24th, to really gear up for the last month. I think it's really gonna take an all hands on deck approach and really, whatever resources you think we need, please, please let us know.
Absolutely. We're meeting tomorrow. We have some new, good ideas that we want to try to implement and we absolutely will come back on the 24th with requests. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Deborah. Appreciate your leadership on this. Duke Energy Partnership Program with Durham Technical Community College. Duke Energy is giving $130,000 to extend the popular electrical line technician program. This gift will be used for student tuition, classroom materials, and tools through the 2023, 2024 seventh year. For more information about the electrical line technician program, please contact Nathan Harden at Durham Tech at 919-536-7246, extension 5206, or Harden, H-I-R-D-I-N-N, at durhamtech.edu. This is really a great opportunity for people who are looking for work now to get into this supported program. There's also the Durham Technical Community College Back to Work Initiative. Durham Tech is offering a number of courses to help students get opportunities for immediate employment in high-demand occupations. Courses are being offered in career fields listed below, which require less than a year of classroom time to help students get back to work quickly. These are fields like biotechnology, information technology, health and wellness, skilled trades, and more. There are scholarships available. Some courses may require a high school devotee diploma or a GED high set, as well as access to a computer internet. Please visit the website that we are going to have listed on our website and in our announcements to find out more about the Durham Tech Back to Work Initiative. I also want to add to our announcements, this was in the Durham County Bulletin, that there is emergency COVID funding available for Durham residents at Central Community Piedmont Community Action. This is for assistance with things like rent, employment, all types of COVID-related assistance. The phone number is 919-797-0888. And it is located at 1007 Broad Street. You do need an appointment, though, for this assistance. And I would ask that Deborah and Monica, we make sure to get, get that information as a part of our announcements. And I do want to also add that on Friday, August 14th, we are going to be celebrating Engaging Local Government Leaders City Hall Selfie Day. And we want to still, we know it's a time of COVID, but we want to celebrate our love for our residents and our employees. And on this day, we're inviting everyone in Durham County to show their love for Durham by taking a selfie and posting it to social media, tagging us, and using hashtags at City Hall Selfie or hashtag #DecoRocks. And if you do not have a social media account, you can email your photo to publicinformationoffice@DCONC.gov and we will post that for you. We can't wait to see everyone's photos with our annual celebration of our love for Durham County Government and all that. We have so many great staff and departments who are helping people in our community every day. So thank you. Any additional announcements from Board members?
Madam Chair, I guess it needs to go under, I have something, it's a resolution from A PRI. And I guess, I guess it needs to go under, rather than announcements, whichever you think is best to read it. But it's a statement on the passing of our beloved Congressman John Lewis and C.T. Vivian that I want to acknowledge.
Well, we could do it now if you'd like.
Sure. Thank you. So this was sent to me by A. Philip Randolph Institute, and it's a statement on the passing of Reverend Dr. C.T. Vivian and Congressman John Lewis. The A. Philip Randolph Institute Johnsonation in warning the passing of two giants in the civil rights movement. The lives of these two giants, Reverend Dr. C.T. Vivian and Congressman John Lewis, were shaped by their belief in the value of all people, regardless of the color of their skin or their economic standing. In fact, it was the historic struggle for racial justice that powered to their commitment to fight oppression, no matter the sacrifice and no matter how long the battle. Both began their lifelong work as young men. In 1947, at age 23, Reverend Dr. C.T. Vivian participated in his first non-violent protest at a launch counter sit-in in Pinoria, Illinois. Continued his work during the 60s, fully engaged with the Freedom Riders from Montgomery, Alabama, to Jackson, Mississippi, registering black folks to vote in Selma, and working alongside the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. During a series of campaigns against segregation in Memphis, Tennessee, his voice echoed a constant message. In no way would he, would we allow nonviolence to be destroyed by violence. It was his mantra throughout his entire life. At the age of 23, John Lewis made history in 1963 as the youngest preacher during the historic march on Washington. Standing beside giants like A. Philip Randolph, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King, with fire in his belly, he continued his fight at marches across the state of Alabama, including the most brutal march in Selma, crossing the Edmund Pettus Bridge, where he was beaten nearly to the point of losing his life. He later became the Congressman from Georgia and the longest-serving member of the Congressional Black Caucus. But he, he never forgot what his fighting, what he was fighting for. He fought for the marginalized communities throughout the nation, and he never forgot what he was fighting against, racial and social injustice. One of his last public appearances outside of Congress was his standing on the freshly dried artwork in yellow words, Black Lives Matter, on the newly named the Black Lives Matter Plaza, just across the park from the White House. When asked what message he would give to the younger protesters, Congressman Lewis said, "You must be able and prepared to give until you cannot give anymore. Keep making good trouble." I know his, his funeral has already been, but we had not had an opportunity to acknowledge him, and I wanted to make sure that we did that.
Thank you very, thank you, Commissioner Howerton, for sharing that. And I'm glad that we, that you have given us the opportunity to recognize both monumenters in our country and in the civil rights movement. Thank you. And the other announcements, we will move on to the minutes. We have minutes from the August, I'm sorry, the May 4th work session, the May 27th budget work session, the June 1st work session, and the June 8th regular session. I want to recognize staff for bringing forth all of these minutes to us and your hard work on that. Thank you. We know you're celebrating your great staff back. We created that.
Move approval, Madam Chair.
Second, moved by Commissioner Recau, second by Commissioner Howerton, and we will take a voice vote, starting with Commissioner Howerton.
Yes.
Commissioner Recau.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Carter.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. They're unanimously approved. I did have one question, Mr. Manager. In the June 1st minutes, there was mention of the, the facilities assessment for the animal shelter. When, when would we, when is that gonna be shared with our Board?
Hello?
Hi.
Okay. Sorry, I was talking and I was muted. But the, long and short of it is, I'll have to lean on Harry to ask him precisely where we are in respect to our ability to be able to update you. But I can touch bases with staff tomorrow morning. I'll send the Board an email to that effect once the engineering staff has an opportunity to surprise me of where they are on the project.
Okay, thank you. And I just also want to mention in the, in the May 4th minutes, on pages 18 and 19, there were a lot of different questions. And if you could just review those and make sure, I think a lot of them were answered during our budget process, but I'm, I wasn't quite sure that, when I read through them. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
All right, staff, take a look at them.
Okay, thank you. We have some really important ceremonial items tonight. The first is, we have memorial resolutions honoring the lives and legacies of four great leaders in our community. We lost a number of people in, months ago, really, back in March. Really just seemed all of a sudden, we, we had terrible tragedy of losing some really incredible people in our community. And I want to thank Deborah for pulling together these beautiful resolutions because even though we can't celebrate their lives the way we normally do, and we invite families to come in, and that's, that's what each of these people deserve. I thought it was important that we still not let too much time pass by, as Brenda, our Commissioner Howerton, did with John Lewis and Reverend Vivian, that we, we still make sure that we, we remember and understand that we will further celebrate all of their lives when we can. And so I'm gonna, I've texted some Commissioners. I don't know if you saw my texts about seeing if various Commissioners can help out with these resolutions. But I'm gonna ask Commissioner Recau, I know you served for many years with Marianne Black as a fellow county commissioner. So if you would have the honor of please reading the resolution in honor of her.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is indeed an honor to read a resolution recognizing the life and legacy of Marianne Black, a longtime colleague, 12 years on Board of County Commissioners. We served together and a very good friend. Whereas Marianne Black, an esteemed public servant who served the people of Durham and the state of North Carolina, made her transition on March 25th, 2020. And whereas she was born in Manhattan, New York, and raised in Florence, South Carolina, where she was educated in Florence Public Schools, graduating from Wilson High School. And whereas Marianne continued her formal education at Benedict College in Columbia, South Carolina, where she earned a Bachelor of Science degree in English, and later received her Master's Degree in Social Work from the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. And whereas upon completing her education, she moved to Durham, where she worked for more than 30 years as a clinical social worker, providing psychotherapy services to children and their families. And whereas she was elected as a member of the Durham Board of County Commissioners, serving from 1990 until 2002, and was Chair from 1996 until 2002. And whereas Marianne Black was chosen to serve as Associate Vice President for Community Relations for the Duke University Health System, where she worked dynamically to address healthcare disparities. And whereas in 2017, she was appointed to the North Carolina General Assembly as a member of the House of Representatives, where she faithfully served the citizens of District 29 with honor and distinction, working on key committees, including aging appropriations, health and human services, to name a few. And whereas Marianne was the recipient of many awards and recognitions, including Social Worker of the Year by the State of North Carolina and the National Association of Social Workers in 1994, the Greater Durham Chamber of Commerce Circle of Influence Diversity Award in 2005, Women in Action, Eleanor B. Spalding Founder's Award, and Woman of the Year Award for 2020 from the Greater Durham Black Chamber of Commerce. And whereas civic engagement was so important to her, and Marianne was firmly engaged in the affairs of her community, serving as President of the Durham Downtown Rotary Club and as the first female Chair of the Greater Durham Chamber of Commerce Board. And whereas we pause to honor this insightful and dedicated public servant and civic champion, who will always be remembered for her genuine compassion and love of others, now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the Durham County Board of Commissioners, do hereby resolve to pay tribute to Marianne Black for a life of distinguished public service. We call upon all citizens of Durham County to remember this phenomenal woman who steadfastly worked to improve the quality of life and health for all. This, the 10th day of August 2020, Wendy Jacobs Chair, James Hill Jr. Vice Chair, Heidi Carter Commissioner, Brenda A. Howerton Commissioner, and Ellen Recau Commissioner. I just want to say, not only was I on the Board with her, but during the six years that she was Chair, I was the Vice Chair. And so we worked very closely together those six years. And we had the honor of going up to the Rose Garden together after the Duke basketball team won the national championship. And that was sure fun. That was very memorable. But there were many great, great times.
Thank you, Commissioner Recau, for reading that and sharing that memory. And I'm sure you had a lot of special memories with Marianne. Thank you. And I ask Commissioner Howerton, if you could read a resolution honoring another great woman leader in our community, Andrea Lynette Harris?
My honor, I'm privileged to read this resolution of a small giant, is what we called her. Durham County Board of Commissioners Resolution, Andrea Lynette Harris. Whereas Andrea Harris, widely known and admired for opening doors for minority-owned businesses in North Carolina and beyond, made her transition on May 20th, 2020, following an extended illness. And whereas she grew up in Henderson, North Carolina, graduated from Henderson Institute, and received a Bachelor's of Arts degree in psychology from Bennett College, Greensboro, North Carolina, in 1970. And whereas Andrea chose work rather than graduate school, and in 1971, she began work and the Executive Director of Community Development with the Franklin Vance Warren Opportunity Incorporated, working to provide social service programs, helping to fight poverty. And whereas in 1978, she created a North Carolina Senior Citizens Federation to advocate for the need of our sufficient, significant elderly population. And whereas it was in 1986 when Andrea co-founded the North Carolina Institute of Minority Economic Development, serving as its president for much of her career, that would bring her notoriety for breaking significant barriers in the corporate financing arena to help historically underserved businesses obtain funding. And whereas she was the recipient of significant awards and honors, such as the Order of the Longleaf Pine, the state's highest honor, the Abe Rongbow Lifetime Achievement Award from the U.S. Department of Commerce, Minority Business Development Agency, and honorary doctorate from her beloved alma mater, Bennett College, and the Lifetime Achievement Award from the Duke University Samuel de Beau's Cook Society. And whereas during her stellar career, Andrea served as many boards, served on many boards, including Gateway, CDC, Vance County Economic Development Commission, Fifth Third Bank, Vance Granville Community College, the North Carolina State University National Adversity Board of the Institute for Emerging Issues, Bennett College Board of Trustees, DOT Office of Civil Rights, Adversity Council, North Carolina Central University Public Administration Program, Advisory Council, and earned gubernatorial appointments to the N.C. Rural Infrastructure Authority Board and the Governor's Historically Underutilized Business Advisory Council. And whereas, as a final and fitting tribute to her life spent working for social and racial equity, Governor Roy Cooper created the Andrea Harris Governor Roy Cooper created the Andrea Harris Social, Economic, Environmental, and Health Equity Task Force to focus on eliminating health disparities, which were revealed with the disproportionate number of coronavirus in minority communities. Now therefore, it be resolved that we, the members of Durham County Board of Commissioners, do hereby resolve to pay tribute to Andrea Lynette Harris for a lifetime, for a life of trailblazing service that helped others obtain and enhance levels of economic security. We call upon all citizens of Durham County to remember this innovative, gifted, and hardworking woman who made a difference. This, the tenth day of August, two thousand and twenty, Wendy Jacobs Chair, James Hill Vice Chair, Heidi Carter, Brenda Howerton, and Ellen Recau. What a woman, what a woman. And, you know, I don't think it's very many of us that are in the game of politics that she hasn't mentored or had some impact on our lives. She will be dearly missed.
Thank you, Commissioner Howerton. As you said, a, a giant among us. And I would now ask Commissioner Hill if he could read the resolution for Kenneth William Edmonds, another great loss in our community.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Durham Board of County Commissioners Resolution, Kenneth William Edmonds. Whereas Kenneth William Edmonds was born in Durham on December fifth, nineteen fifty-three, and made his transition on Saturday, May second, two thousand and twenty, following a brief illness. And whereas Edmonds attended public schools in Durham and Chapel Hill, Carboro, graduated high school from Laurinburg Institute, a preparatory high school located in Laurinburg, North Carolina, and continued his education at East Carolina University in Greenville, where he studied journalism. And whereas the Carolina Times newspaper was a family-owned business. And Kenneth literally grew up while watching his grandfather and his mother manage all aspects of this vital and respected weekly community newspaper. And whereas in two thousand and two, Kenneth was named editor, publisher of the Carolina Times, and used all the comprehensive skills he'd learned from shadowing his grandfather and mother in his youth, along with his journalism education, to ensure that the operations continue successfully and advance. And whereas during his career, he worked to ensure that the Carolina Times positively represented a true portrait of black life in Durham and beyond. And whereas his outstanding work was admired and received numerous awards and recognitions, including the two thousand and nineteen Distinguished Community Service and Community Journalism Award from the Bennett College National Alumni Association in Durham, and resignation from the Durham Civil Rights Workers' Union Committee in two thousand and twenty. And whereas Edmonds was a member of the North Carolina Black Publishers Association, the National Newspaper Publishers Association, and a life member of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, NAACP. NAACP. And whereas this gifted journalist and community leader will long be remembered for his great body of work. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the Durham County Board of Commissioners, do hereby resolve to pay tribute to Kenneth William Edmonds for carrying on his family's longstanding tradition of publishing relevant news and history of the black community in Durham and beyond. We call upon all citizens of Durham, of Durham County to apologize in honor of his unique gift of listening attentively, writing compassionately, and sharing his keen sense of humanity within the pages of his weekly newspaper. This, the tenth day of August, two thousand and twenty, Wendy Jacobs Chair, James Hill Junior Vice Chair, Heidi Carter Commissioner, Brenda Howerton Commissioner, and Ellen Recau Commissioner. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill. And I just think about, I'm, I'm really missing not getting the Carolina Times in my mailbox the way I, I have been for years. And what a, a loss really it is for, for the whole community, for this historic paper to not be a part of our community. I hope that, that, that it will still live on with, with other hands. So, but Kenneth really, will really be missed in many ways. And Commissioner Carter, if you could please give us the honor of reading the resolution of another, another important community force, Raymond Erkart.
Thank you. It is an honor really, truly to read this resolution in honor of Raymond Erkart. Whereas Raymond Erkart was born and educated in Durham, North Carolina, and made his transition on March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. Whereas, following graduation from Hillside High School in nineteen sixty-six, he enlisted in the United States Air Force and served his country during the Vietnam War era, having been stationed near Siberia. And whereas during his service, he met other black airmen who had witnessed race riots on buses, on bases in California and New Jersey, and with whom he began to share stories of racial injustices, discrimination, and ideas and strategies for political change. And whereas Erkart returned to Durham in nineteen seventy-two and worked at American Tobacco Company until nineteen eighty-seven, during which time he began to solidify his reputation as a community activist. And whereas Brother Ray, as he was fondly called, worked for the city of Durham and served his community as a member of various boards and commissions, including being elected as a Durham County Soil and Water Conservation District Supervisor and an appointed member of the Durham Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. And whereas Ray Erkart received many awards, honors, and recognitions, including being named the two thousand and seventeen Supervisor of the Year by the North Carolina Association of Soil and Water Conservation Districts. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the Durham County Board of Commissioners, do hereby resolve to pay tribute to Raymond Erkart for his tireless dedication to seeking equal rights and a better quality of life for all people. Be it further resolved that he will forever be remembered by those who, for many years, worked shoulder to shoulder with him in the peace, labor, civil rights, and human rights movement. This, the tenth day of August, two thousand and twenty, and there are spaces for all of our signatures.
Thank you, Commissioner Carter. And I know Ray was sitting on my shoulder at our meeting because the last conversation I had with him about a week before he passed away was calling to talk to me about the tax, tax relief proposal.
And I, I would just also add to that, the very first policy that I worked on as an elected official, school board member, and the very, and one of the last policies that we've dealt with as a board, were both policies championed by Ray, the Tax Assistance Grant, as you mentioned. And then my first policy was the living wage policy for Durham Public Schools District that we approved back in, I think, two thousand and five. He, he was quite a ment- mentor to a lot of people. I only wish I had known him longer.
Thank you. So thank you, Board members, for reading those beautiful resolutions, celebrating the lives of incredible people in our community that we saw all the time. They were a part of our community. And people who, I think are, are really, were an inspiration to, to so many people and will hopefully continue to be an inspiration. Because when I listen to all of the words that you are all reading and thinking about how each of them were people that followed their passions in life and how following that took them to other places, to where they, they ended up really making, making a, a difference in so many people's lives. So, yes, Commissioner Recau.
I just wanna say that as I listened to these resolutions, I just became very sad because they were all taken too young from us. They, they, they all had so much more to give to this community and, and were such great contributors to improving the lives of citizens in our community. So it's very, very sad.
Absolutely. So it's up to us to all, everybody collectively in the Durham community to keep, keep their vision and their mission and their, what they're working toward alive. So thank you. And thank you, Deborah. Great job on those. Thank you for those beautiful resolutions. So we are going to move on to celebrating our staff. And we, Durham County Government was presented a two thousand and twenty Achievement Award from the North, the National Association of Counties. And this is very exciting. We have Ben Rose here, our DSS Director, and Brandon Mitchell, and I know we've got lots of other staff that worked on this. But I am so proud as now the Chair of the DSS Board to just recognize, I know Commissioner Recau is going to be so excited about this because our, our, our DSS staff really did something very transformative and innovative in this award. And I'm not gonna say anything else about it and steal any thunder and turn it over to you to talk more about this, Ben. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening. What a, what a way to visit with you tonight. I miss coming downtown and seeing you guys in person, but we're safe. So that's the important thing. But thank you for this opportunity to just share about this award. This is, this is really exciting because this project has now won two awards. So I feel like, you know, when they say you win two Oscars, you're really big in Hollywood. So we feel really big in the social service world now. But we are very excited about this project still. Even with the raging pandemic and all the challenges we've, that has been thrown at us, this project still really has a lot of meaning to us. We didn't really have that normal budget process this year where we got to really use this project and use this tool to the extent we, we can. But we, we will hopefully be able to do that in the very near future. This, I think this project too is just the realization of what happens when collaboration takes place. And us, we identified a, a need in DSS to help us with both our budgetary side of the house and with our services side of the house to see what trends we had in foster care so that we could do some predicting out and help prepare for what we might be seeing in two years, four years, five, and even maybe ten years out. So we, we partnered with County ISNT to really kind of build that model using various data points, various historic trends. Brandon Mitchell was a big driver behind it in the DSS side. And then Les and Rebecca were big, were a big, big partners to us on the County ISNT side. And what this, what this basically does is it allows, it gives us a tool to see what we might be looking at in the future in terms of children coming into care. It helps us break it out from a demographic standpoint, from a predictive analytics standpoint. But the biggest thing I really want to get to next is as we go into two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two with the Families First Act, which we hope North Carolina will be adopting, I think where, where this model will come into more play is helping us to create some performance measures now to actually lower those predictive analytics and to lower that curve of kids coming into care. Because what we see in the future right now is not promising. It, it really shows our kids, it, it shows us bringing more kids into care. And we need to turn that tide, get more upstream, get more proactive. And with Families First, we'll be able to use federal four E dollars to actually work in a preventative approach versus a reactive approach. So my hope is we can start to tie what we've done here in the future with Families First and then look at performance measures there. So it's very exciting. I think we really are getting into, just starting to scratch the surface here in, in some of these areas. This coupled with some work that we're doing with the Sanford School of Policy as well too. They're looking at some predictive analytics and child welfare for us. They're doing some research using our data. We finally got the data agreement signed with the state of North Carolina about a week and a half, two weeks ago. So we really are wanting to be proactive and really take a, a very upstream approach in terms of how we deal with families going forward and try to, and try to do more preventative intervention. So this is a great recognition of some hard work. And I really think it will continue to pay off as we, as we go down the road. And again, it's partnership here that made this really possible. And that's what makes Durham County such a, such a wonderful place, is the collaborations that we have. I'm gonna let Brandon just take a minute or two to recognize some staff. And, and, and again, he was one of the, I, I kinda gave him the vision and he took with it and, and ran with it, really when he came on, not long after coming on board. So he really, he really showed his talents early to me. And I'll let him talk a little bit about it, then we'll let County ISNT follow up with any closing remarks. So Brandon, I'll let you take it.
Thank you, Ben. First, just like to take a second to thank the board tonight for taking this time this evening to recognize the, the work of the social services and County ISNT staff. Because without them, this project would not have happened. This was not a one-person project. Multiple people worked on it. Rebecca Hardigan was the, the leader of the project in moving, moving a lot of it forward on the ISNT part. And Brian Wasowski was the lead developer in helping pull all this data together from, we went back, we went back over fifteen years pulling data across the state and looking at other counties to make sure that this model actually worked. And using the first time, an analytic predictive model to really look at how foster care, children are coming into care basing it off of per thousand and then looking at the growth in population in Durham and predicting out what that would be. You know, this is important because like Ben was just talking about is, how do we curb this in the future? How do we prevent those kids from coming into care? And are we able to get to them sooner? The other good part from the county side is it also helps us actually have a model that we can look at to determine, you know, number of social workers that might be needed to help provide these services. And then long-term wise, it, it really helps us with determining our budget needs and that we're, we're able to give some type of long-term prediction of what it is gonna cost us. So we can budget for it appropriately. And hopefully we will be able to show in a few years with the care of trying to reduce the amount of kids coming into care that we can actually reduce this total cost to the citizens of Durham. But again, it's a really cool project. There's other agencies that are kind of looking at this model to see how they can replicate it in their, their areas and everything. So really, really cool to be on this project and a great team to work with. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. I don't know. I, I do wanna recognize Rebecca and Les and Brian. I don't know if any of the other folks are, are here with us. Greg, I see you there.
Good evening.
Thank you too for your, for your folks being part of the team. We had Rebecca, we have this lateral movement in Durham County Government. So Brandon was in EMS and now we've got him over in DSS. And then Rebecca, she moved from DSS, sorry, over to work in, in IT. So as long as we keep you all in the family, we're, we're good with that, right?
That's right.
There you are, Rebecca. Now I see you. And of course Rebecca is the power couple because her husband works in, in the office of the sheriff. So, you know, they're, they're the Durham County power couple. But I just didn't know if you all wanted to share any comments. I wanted to give you all the opportunity. Greg and Rebecca.
Again, good evening, Commissioners. Again, just wanted to
Again, good evening Commissioners, again, just wanted to re-articulate what Ben said, and that is this was a collaborative effort. And it's always great when members from the various teams can come together to solve real county business issues. And although we all find ourselves providing a lot of defensive technology, this is a great example of the strategic work that we do in the county. This is ultimately the mission of IT. And that is to help business units across the county carry out their business goals. So Rebecca, you might want to just say a couple of things.
Sure, I really didn't want to take too much, I've been away from DSS for about a little over a year now. But this was actually one of the projects I worked on over the past couple of years. And we were just trying to solve a challenge and just saw an opportunity to create change and solve that challenge. So I'm really proud of the work we've done both in ISNT and DSS and great working together. And just want to keep moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I just wanted to give any other board members a chance, any comments? Well, thank you so much to all of you and congratulations on this national award, this national recognition, well deserved. And we look forward to seeing, being able to see the implement, you know, the work that you have done.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have, we're moving on to our consent agenda. And we have a lot of items on here, there are a few items that were not a part of our work session. I did not know if there needed to be any discussion of some of the ones. You know, that were new items on here. And if anyone had any questions or comments on any of these items. I guess I just wanted to draw attention to two of the items. One is the Long Time Homeowner Tax Deferment Program 20-0397. Because that's something that we just voted on at the last meeting. And so Dwayne, could we get, I just wanted to get clarification on something on that item. Are you, are you here with us tonight?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, Dwayne, thank you. So we haven't discussed this with the city yet, we will get to tomorrow at our Joint City-County Meeting. If they want to move forward with us, how would that work?
Well, I think we can administer it on behalf of the city, since I am charged with collecting the city taxes as well. I think the only thing for the governing bodies to consider would be a cost agreement. If the city wants to share in the cost of administration, that would probably be, and their acknowledgement to participate. But the cost would be really the only substantive item for discussion with the city.
Okay, and will these staff be involved also in helping to promote the existing programs? I know one of the things that you mentioned was that there were only something like 62 residents. Or something involved with with one of the existing state programs. I forget which program that you mentioned that within, I don't know if I got the number correct.
Right, so the Circuit Breaker is probably the one you're referencing, it has to be. And the Circuit Breaker has 29 participants, so very low number of participants. But you have to keep in mind that most people that would qualify for the Circuit Breaker, which is a deferment program. Most people that will qualify for that would also qualify for the homestead. The only, the only people that would not qualify for the homestead would be those that make, have an income above 31.5. And it goes up to, I think, 47,250 for the Circuit Breaker. So the Circuit Breaker captures a little more population than the homestead does, but it's a deferment program.
Well, I'm just wondering, did you have any thoughts on how, so would these staff be involved with those as well? Helping to promote those as well?
Absolutely, yeah, I actually was meeting with staff last week after we, after the board meeting. And the board's vote to move forward with the Payment Deferral Program. And I mentioned that on the payment agreements for this program. That I want a requirement on that agreement where we have to use our Property Tax Assistance Evaluator Tool. Or in some way, screen them to see if they qualify for the homestead or the Circuit Breaker first. Because those two programs, if they qualify, would benefit them more than the deferral program. With the deferral program, we're trying to capture a population that does not qualify for the other programs. Meaning they are, you know, below 65 years of age, any age below 65 years of age. While still having extreme low income and having owned their home for 10 years. So that, yeah, that's a good point, Madam Chair, they would, that would be step one. If someone comes in and says, I heard about this new program with the details on it. Step one is to use our evaluator tool, which is online now. Or if they are knowledgeable enough, just go through the screening process themselves. And make sure they don't qualify for a state program.
Okay, great, I'm glad to hear that. And then in terms of the implementing the tax, you know, the check off box on people's taxes. That they can contribute to the fund for the fees and the interest. Do you have any thoughts on whether that would be able to actually get going right away?
Yeah, we have met with the print vendor already to discuss that. I'm not sure we can do a checkbox on the tax bill. They brought up the issue that we contract with a lockbox. And the lockbox has a file of the actual amount of taxes due. And if a overpayment is submitted, the payments don't usually come to us, they go through a bank operation. And if a payment is submitted that is $10 more than what the bank has on its records, it's going to create an exception. Now, that's not a big issue on the surface, that means that we would have to manually key all those contributions. But we are looking at, we're looking at ways to get that done immediately this tax year.
Okay, well, I guess we'll look forward to you coming back with some ideas on that, thank you.
I'd like to know, I think the board should consider partnering with a nonprofit. To provide some financial counseling to individuals that participated in the program. Is that something that has been considered? As a board member, I want to make sure that the infrastructure is in place. Is there something wrong with my camera, Wendy?
No.
Okay, when I talk, when I talk, they see you, they don't see me. So is there something wrong with my camera?
You need to, can you press the, there's a box that looks like a big grid.
A what?
A grid, if you press, there's a box that looks like a grid and then you see everybody.
Yeah, I see everybody, I see myself. But when I speak, the camera is not showing me, it's just showing you.
Okay, well, I see you, I don't know what anybody else is seeing.
Commissioner Howerton, on the top right of your screen, there should be something that says Speaker View and Gallery View.
That's what I was trying to say.
Gallery View.
Click on that, it should pull up individual squares.
It did.
Okay.
Okay, it's pulled up a whole lot of squares.
Yeah, right, you only see the active videos and the names of those that don't have a video on.
All right, I see, all it says is Speaker View and then it's got everybody's on the screen.
Commissioner Howerton, whenever you're speaking, we can see you perfectly fine. And we can.
That's interesting, okay, it just looked weird, all right, let me finish this. So can we do something that has an infrastructure in place to encourage taxpayers? The program so that they don't get hit with a bill in 10 years. Without really having a plan in place to pay it. Is that something that we could add to this, Dwayne?
I think we can make it a step in our process, I see Claudia just activated her videos, she may want to speak.
Commissioner Howerton, that is a concept that is used by nonprofit agencies and other agencies that do counseling. And that is definitely something we can come back to the board with if that's something they desire to proceed with. We could either have an RFP for a nonprofit to partner and do that work. And we can refine what the scope is since we're trying to see what the population may be, how many participants may be in the first year. So we can definitely come back to the board with a concept.
Okay, Commissioner, oh, sorry. Commissioner Recap?
Well, I support that, in fact, I actually reached out to our tax administrator last week. And raised the issue about perhaps having him monitor in the first few months. What perhaps the needs of the clients coming in are and might give us a better feel. But I support it 100%, I think if we can help with some financial advice and counseling. Perhaps by contracting, as you said, Commissioner Howerton, with a nonprofit group. That we can help them find a path forward. That wouldn't lead to them being in a deficit situation 10 years out. I think that there's many ways to go on that, so I support us looking at that for sure.
I agree, that's a very good idea because I'm concerned about just the impact of having this huge tax bill. And the accumulating fees and interest, so I think that's really important, so thank you. I didn't know if any Commissioners also had a comment, we did receive a request from Jim Savara. Who has been so devoted and dedicated to this issue, has devoted like a year of his life working on this. With other people as well in the community, but he is, he also brought forth another suggestion or request. And I didn't want to go without ignoring that. So just wanted to put that out there for any Commissioners to respond to.
Well, I was going to say, I was going to say that, you know, I wanted to acknowledge that message that we received today. And the brief discussion that we had about the actual percentage level that we, you know, beyond which we defer, that we allow deferral. And you know, the suggestion has come forward that perhaps 2% would make more sense. These people are very low income. And 1%, you know, 1% would mean that they would pay fewer taxes, but their 10-year bill would be much, much higher. 4%, there's not that much immediate relief, there is relief, of course, but is it enough, I guess is the question. Could we go with 2%? I wasn't planning to say anything about this tonight, I assumed that there might be some discussion of it tomorrow. At the Joint City-County Meeting, you know, my real question would be, are we expecting the city to join? Are we expecting the city to join with all of the sort of parameters we put in place? I'm just wondering how we're planning to work together, I guess, with them. But I'm not really expecting an answer on any of this, I didn't intend to discuss this tonight. But I do think it is worthy of discussion at some point, if maybe not for this year, I don't know. But I definitely think it's worthy of discussion and maybe the city will raise it.
Commissioner Recap?
So the other thing that I contacted our tax administrator about was in response to Jim Savara's concept of reducing to 2%. The Chair of the Board asked Dwayne to look at what that would mean. And he sent out an example after I reviewed it, and I thought, you know, it was very helpful. But after I reviewed it, I just wanted to get, have a double check on what I was seeing in that chart. Because what's interesting about it is that with the 4%. Someone in the program, as we have it shaped right now. Receives a less, would be paying less than half the property taxes that they're currently paying. And as a result, has a really big break in tax payment. And 2% just takes it way down, but the interesting thing is, and I think he was going to perhaps bring in addition to the chart for tomorrow's meeting, but the the situation of taking it down as much as we do with 4, takes it down so that a typical property owner will see their taxes go back to before three assessments earlier. So before our 2019, our 2016, and the 2008. And takes it down to about where they might have been in '07. So it's over 10 years of gentrification, you know, this was all about gentrification. It's kind of wiping that gentrification increase away. So, but the other thing it does is they don't dig so big a hole in what they have to pay back. But Dwayne, do you want to add to that? And you have a good example, I believe, that you were going to bring tomorrow, right?
Sure, and I did that analysis upon our conversation, Commissioner Recap. Just to see, because what I've been hearing in my many meetings with Dr. Savara and the Coalition. And the joint meetings, is that the gentrification of the 16 and 19 reappraisals. They have driven taxes and values high. So what I wanted to do was run through the analysis and using the last example that I gave to the board last week. With the home value of $160,000, the starting value. I went back and essentially erased the 19 and the 16 reappraisal. What I did, I assumed a 50% increase in 16 and in 19. And I realized I've been hearing in some areas, it's been more than a 50% increase. But I assumed a 50% increase in 16 and 19. And when you take away those two reappraisals, it backs you up to values in 2008, right? So the value from 2008, 2015 stays the same because there hasn't been a reappraisal. If you, given those assumptions, that means that the value in 2008 through 2015. For that $160,000 house today, it would have been $71,000 during that time period in 2008. So I also went back and pulled the 2008 tax rates to see the actual impact, the tax bill to the taxpayer in 2008. Under the Payment Deferral Plan at 4%, given our example. The taxpayer pays Durham County taxes of $456. That's the Durham County tax paid. And if you apply the tax rates in '08, it comes out to be $503. So it's almost back to the '08 levels, and the same thing for the city. Under the 4% agreement, it is $344 taxes paid for the city in 2020 taxes. And then again, if you erase the 19 and 16 reappraisal, it takes you back to 2008. They would pay, they paid $383 in '08. So they're actually, they're actually paying $47 less to Durham County. And $39 less to the City of Durham than they paid in 2008. If you use 4% as the metric, now obviously 2%, 1% would be a lot less paid in 2020. Now, obviously, 2%, 1% would be a lot less paid in 2020.
Thank you, Duane, for looking at that. That is, that is very compelling. And, and I appreciate you. I know we'll talk about this more tomorrow with the city. Per Commissioner Carter's comments about wanting to hear, hear the, you know, they don't know anything about it yet. I spoke to the mayor about it today and, and they're looking forward to hearing, hearing more tomorrow. So thank you. So we'll get the follow-up information about the financial counseling and then also about the checkbox options or what we can do for the, for the fund for, for fees and interest. So thank you. Thank you so much. The other item I did want to also draw attention to because I know that our board has not discussed this, but it's really important. And that is item 20-0410, the Preservation of Gears Cemetery. I know I saw Tom Miller.
Yeah, Madam Chair, before, I'm so used to us just going down the list. So that, yeah, there's, can we go back up to 04, 02? So that we don't forget that. I have some questions about that one. I don't know if we should pull it or I I don't understand all of the, the numbers here. So is it just the $100,000? Because the charts are showing a lot more than $100,000. So I'm just trying to figure out what are, what are we doing here in this one?
So Jody, do you want to take that? That is the $95,000 allocation for the, let's get back on the Bull Communications Plan.
Yeah, the, the chart is showing another $278,000. So I'd just like to know what, exactly what it is that we are approving.
Well, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This budget amendment comes from the board's discussion during the work session with the Recovery and Renewal Task Force. If you recall, the board agreed to fund $95,000 for essentially the first two, the second and third phases of the Back on the Bull campaign that was, has been created by the, the task force in partnership with other community partners. And so this is just funding what the board talked about during the work session.
So in the graph here, it says estimated requests for the local government, $264,195. That is, it's a, an estimated request, but there are no, we're not approving that.
That is correct. The, the conversation by the board during work session was to just approve the $95,000 initially and then to get an update on the campaign in the fall for consideration of funding additional amount of which will be split by the city too. This is, this is the county and city splitting this cost.
Okay. My other question is, what's the minority vendor that's participating in that? I don't see where there's any minority participation in African-American businesses or people of color participating in this at all.
So I know Susan is not on here, but 57%. I know the advertising it says is going to go for, out into the Latinx community, specifically because we have over 50% of our COVID cases there. And, and I know that it's, it's, it, most of it is being targeted in, in, you know, the minority community. We can get that information. I told Susan she didn't have to come to the meeting tonight, honestly, because we had already discussed this, but she can provide that information to you.
Yeah, we hadn't, we hadn't discussed this piece of it. And I'd like for that to be a part of the document before we approve it.
Well, I, I, we, we actually need to approve this now because they have to go out and buy the, the buys in the media. That's what we discussed, that this was a very time-sensitive issue. So I, I would just say that, you know, we, we, we did discuss this at our work session. We did.
Mr. Manager, this was, what I'm asking was not a part of the discussion. And I'm asking that that be a part of the document.
I think what we agreed on last week was essentially the initial $95,000. And staff was essentially going to be doing due diligence on the remainder of those costs to discuss affordability and otherwise. And so the $95,000, we all, we all reached a consensus on last week.
What I'm asking is about the minority participation in the contract. I don't see where that's part of the contract at all.
Well, you know, I just, my concern, I understand and the, and the information can be provided to you, that, that is the focus of the campaign. But my concern is, we, we heard last week that they have to go out, we don't meet again for two weeks, and they have to go out and start buying, going out and buying the radio time and the TV time and, and all of that. And so we, that's what we heard last week very clearly. The city is actually
And who will be going out and buying the TV time?
There's a whole communications team. There's a whole communications team that's involved. And I'm sorry, I didn't tell, I told, you know, Susan, Amy, she didn't have to be here because we, we, we said last week that we approved it and that it was going to be on our consent agenda. And the city has actually gone ahead and approved the entire request of $132,000 that was requested.
Wendy, we made a commitment to the community that our contracts would be, would have minority participation. This would, does not, and this is what I'm bringing to your attention here.
Well, it does. If you look at the agenda item, they said that even 57% of it will be buys in the Latinx community. I, I can pull it up and show you where it says it. Commissioner Reca.
Well, what I'm not seeing, actual contracts yet. This, this is a planning proposal. And I think actually, Commissioner Howerton, you're raising a good issue. I think if we just communicate with them that when they do contract, that they look at using minority vendors, that they, they, they'll make a special effort. But there are no contracts here per se.
Right. And that's a great point. And I, I, again, the agenda item, I'm, I'm looking at it now. So I don't know what you can all see because I'm looking at it. But the actual, I know, Jody, could you, could you read for me and for us where the description is in, in the materials that we got related to this? Could you do that for us? Because it explains what, what their plans are related to minority buying in the minority media field.
Yes, give me a moment, give me, give me a moment to pull it up.
All right, thank you. So we'll come, we'll
So if you look at the attachments.
Yeah, thank you. I can't see, but then
Yeah, so look at, look at the, the second attachment. It gives sort of an overview, an overview of the communications plan and what the contribution for both the city and county would go for. And so you'll see that it, how they're looking to buy, what type of media they're looking to buy, looking at some of the target groups based on the data that we have here in Durham. And you'll see that information has been provided. And so this is the information that was provided to the Recovery and Renewal Task Force when they were looking at funding proposals to come before both the city and the county.
And it was provided to us last week as
Right. This was part of the work session items, and it was added back on the agenda tonight just for the budget amendment piece of it so that we could go ahead and provide the $95,000.
Okay. You are, you're, you're, you're not, you're not hearing what I'm saying. In WBE, we always have a con, have an agreement with our contracts that they will be, that people will be hired to participate in the process. That's what I'm saying. I don't see, I've read, I've read the material, Madam Chair. I'm saying that I don't see that.
Okay, so I understand what you're saying now. So I think, I think what Commissioners Reca suggested would be, would be what we need to do, which is to ask them to bring back to us the information about exactly who the contracts are with so that we can see that participation that you're asking for. Because this is, yes, okay. So I understand what you're saying now. So we, we can ask that. Jody, can you convey that? That we want to, you know, we would like to be provided information about the actual contracts that they use the money for?
We can certainly make them aware.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you. And so, yeah, just related to that, the city actually went ahead and funded all three phases. And they also already approved paying 50% of whatever the cost is for the community health workers. And I know that will be coming back to us on, at our next meeting, right, Jody? August 24th?
Yes, the revised proposal coming from UNC will be brought back before the board during the meeting on the 24th.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Howerton, were there other items that you wanted to discuss?
Okay, that one was, I think those were the main two. No, I don't see anything else that I pulled.
Okay, any other items from other commissioners? So I just wanted to go mention the Gear Street Cemetery, 20-0410. I did see Tom Miller on here earlier. I had the opportunity to actually talk with Tom about this item, and I know other board members may not have. But I do want to recognize all the members of the Friends of the Gear Street Cemetery who are working on this issue. And that was Tom. I want to just recognize all of the members here. Tom, are you, are you here with us? But Tom, and also Julia Taylor and Julianne Patterson. Hey, Tom, I just want to recognize you all for your efforts on, on this grant opportunity. I want to thank the county manager and our county attorney for meeting with Tom and the other members and these great opportunities that we really have to, to support the Friends of Gear Street Cemetery. So if you could just say a few words, Tom, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Actually, I wanted to thank our president, Deborah Taylor, who's been heading us up these last two years. We've worked very, very hard. And our partners at Preservation Durham, we've asked the county to help us with a grant application that's come our way. Of course, there's no guarantee that we'll get the grant with the county's assistance. We hope to be eligible for the grant. If we do get the money, we intend to spend it for an archaeological survey, the National Register nomination. It'll be the first time that we have had a systematic inventory of what we've actually got on the ground. For those who may not be familiar with the Gear Cemetery, city of Durham was founded in 1869. And in 1871, the city was not even two years old. The city government acquired its first property, which was Maplewood Cemetery, a cemetery for white people. It did not acquire land for a public cemetery for the city's African-American population until 1925, and that was Beechwood Cemetery. The African-American community in Durham created their own public cemetery, and it's been called by various names. Now we call it the Gear Cemetery. It's four acres, there are at least 2,000 graves there. And from 1877, when it opened, until it was finally closed somewhere around 1940, we know that it was the primary bearing place for African-Americans in our town, largely neglected since the late 1920s. We are trying to recover and restore the cemetery so that it can be part of the public history of Durham. Big plans for, for restoration of the cemetery, but this is a first step. And we're so very grateful to the county, the manager, the attorney, Ms. Tumer, all of the folks who have helped us along the way. Vice Chairman Hill was with us when we spoke last week the, to get the county's cooperation that we need for this grant application. So unless there are questions, I appreciate the opportunity to address you.
Well, thank you. And we'll keep our fingers crossed for the grant. It's really important. Thank you. Okay, so we will move forward with the approval of our consent agenda. We have items.
Chair, I'm
Okay. We won't list all the numbers and yeah, okay.
I second the motion.
Moved by Commissioner Reca, seconded by Commissioner Carter. And we'll do, start with a voice vote, Commissioner Carter. Aye. Commissioner Hill. Commissioner Reca.
Aye.
Commissioner Howerton.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, and all the items are unanimously approved. Okay, we have a update from our Austin Public Health Leader, Rod Jenkins. Rod?
Hi there. How you doing?
Nice to see you. So thank you for giving us a, a public health update on our battle against COVID.
Absolutely. Good evening, Madam Chair and other members of the Board of County Commissioners. As I always do, just want to start off by just sincerely thanking you all for all of your support to public health, to the ELC, and to everybody who continues this, this battle against COVID. And it's a pleasure for me to present you with an update thus far. We continue to receive good results from our efforts. Today, we only had about 26 cases to come in. That brings us to 345 active cases. It's been quite a long time since our active cases were under 400. So we continue to, to, to be elated about that. Total inactive cases are the number of Durham residents that have been discharged from COVID care is 5,792. Since the last time the Board of County Commissioners convened, there has been two additional deaths. So that brings us to 79 deaths due to COVID. And the total since the pandemic began is right at 6,218 total cases. Between Durham Public Health and our partners with CCNC, we have contacted 12,087 individuals, and that continues to be a very fruitful relationship. We continue to encourage everyone to go to our data hub, which is on the Public Health's website for your most accurate information. It continues to be approved on a weekly basis. Since today, we started off at 6,092 total cases. Our seven-day moving average right now is roughly about 41 cases. That represents a significant decrease from last week where the average was 51, and the week prior, the average was 63. So far, for the month of August, we have seen 403 cases. So we are seeing our total disease burden decrease within our community. But again, we're continuing to be vigilant. And again, seeing that North Carolina's trajectory of lab-confirmed cases are leveling, Durham is leveling, some may even say flat, some may even say decreasing, but we're going to continue to say level. Not much has changed in terms of Not much has changed in terms of those particular races and ethnicities and work situations that have been impacted by COVID. We continue to see a little more than half of all of our cases continuing to be in the Latinx community at 50.18%. As far as Black or African American, it represents 30.38% of all of our cases. And as far as our white population is 16.26%. And in a nutshell, our Hispanic or Latinx community continues to be overrepresented in our cases, and we continue to work very, very hard with our community partners to fix this. In terms of work, ethnicity, race, and sex, not much change. The construction industry continues to be a big focal point, along with those individuals who are unemployed and those people who work in hospitals and sets. 59.4% of our cases are associated with unemployed individuals of the Hispanic or Latinx population, with 71.2% being female. 87.8% of our cases are related to the construction work industry of the Hispanic or Latinx population of Durham, and 93.2% of male. And 40.2% of our cases are individuals who work in hospitals of the Black or African American community, with 70.7% being female. So we continue to work with those industries. Our positive prevalence is hovering right above 5%. It's anywhere from 5% to 8%. So again, you know, it's 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 reason to be cautiously optimistic. But again, we're continuing to prepare for colleges coming back and back to school, and we're continuing to work with those administrators. I think I'll continue by indicating that we still see a specific zip code where we have the highest case rates. That's a code 27704, which continues to represent 29.21 individuals per 1,000 people. And that continues to look in the stretches of Hamlin Road, Gear Street, Cheek Street, I'm sorry, Cheek Road, and includes parts of Bragtown, Colonial Village, and Merritt Moore neighborhoods. Being that we know that those are what we consider to be the hotspots, we have worked with our Bull City United team, has worked with an organization called Cure Americas since July 30, and they have been initiating community outreach, which is definitely connecting target areas and those geographic clusters of COVID cases. Again, 27704 is definitely one of them. And they're going out to these communities and distributing COVID-related information, face coverings, masks, hand sanitizers, children's resilience info, and just a lot of information about Durham Public Schools and just great information. Some of the areas that were there, they're they're going to include the Sowell Street, Merriweather, the area, very other place, Maureen Road, Chapel Hill Road, Lea Street, Chalk Level Road, and they're continuing to be received very warmly. As I said before, our partnership with Duke University continues to be a fruitful one, and that's reflective of our Holton site. Our Holton Recreation Center has been up and running since July 11, and we have been successful in testing well over 800 individuals. And of those 800 individuals, we have had a positive positive rate of right at about 218, which represents 25.77%. Just to refresh your memory again, our partnership with CCNC allows our contact tracers to almost instantaneously set COVID-19 test appointment at Holton for those close contacts. Those close contacts have been showing up in staggering numbers. 71% as of today have gone and gotten tested and gotten results. When they go there, they get their tests, they get food, which is enough to feed a family of four for two weeks. They receive literature, information. They also receive face covering. And just they just they just receive all the information that they need. So again, this continues to be a great partnership in an effort to box in everything. Last but not least, I'll just state that we do continue to receive modeling from Duke. And again, that's a partnership that we 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 are fortunate to have. Duke's growth rate showed Durham at 0.7%, whereas North Carolina's growth rate was at 0.9%. And our rate of infection was right at about 6%, whereas North Carolina's infection has grown to 10%. We continue to march on. Again, as mentioned, we are most certainly being leery, being careful. We're not letting up. We have had great virtual meetings with Duke University, with North Carolina Central University, with Durham Tech, and also with the North Carolina School of Math and Science, and Science and Mathematics, I should say. And I'm proud to report that they all have a significantly effective plan of action. And we are continuing to stay on the ready to ensure their success when they reopen their doors. At this time, Madam Chair, I'd be more than happy to address any questions you may have.
Thank you for that great report, Rod, and lots of good news in there. 26 cases? I don't remember anything like that for months now, literally months, and that, yeah.
It's been probably probably since early May.
Yeah, wow. Any questions, comments from board members? Commissioner Reca?
Well, I certainly want to commend Rod and all the public health staff, along with our partners that you mentioned at Duke and in other places who have worked so hard to get the numbers down. I've been watching, and they've just been steadily going down the last six, eight weeks, and it's really commendable. I think, though, that some of our policies, well, I think, believe we were the first community in the state to require masks, and that was a very good move on our part. Now, hopefully, if all the other communities in the country did the same, we might be in a lot better shape as a as a nation. The only thing I guess, oh, you gotta, you've got to help her.
Yeah, she's she's wanting to know who's doing all the talking.
Okay. Well, I all I would say is, I just hope this isn't the calm before the storm. I mean, we have thousands of college students arriving i- in the next week or so, and we need to be prepared. So I'm sure that you're you and your staff will rise to the occasion again, but maybe we'll be surprised, but I I I think we need to be very vigilant and just stay on focused and on top of this development and not wait to work with the respective universities if things begin to show signs that that there are major problems.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. And, you know, again, on a call that I had today with Duke, you know, it was actually Dr. Cameron Wolf that reminded reminded me that they, I think I was several weeks onto the job in which they they pulled us together and started talking about COVID and said, hey, welcome to Durham. By the way, you know, let's get to work. So they also said that we've never stopped staying in communication with our colleges and universities. From the widening down of schools to the ramping back up to in between where they were even contemplating what it would look like, they had always involved Durham Public Health, and we we cherish the relationship. And I think it was, you know, Mr. Kavanaugh from Duke who who just stated that when he talks to his colleagues around the nation, they don't they don't necessarily report having this type of rapport and this type of relationship with their local public health. So that that definitely meant something to me and my staff, and we're grateful for our partnership.
And I'll just add on to what Rod said, that we we're forming a an education roundtable as part of the Recovery Renewal Task Force with Duke and NCCU, Durham Tech, Durham Public Schools, Science with not just students and also administrators for that very reason. Because, as Rod said, I mean, Rod has been working with NCCU. They have brought in a contractor to do contact tracing and testing on campus. And I know Rod Rod is working really closely with them, and they are really starting a campaign using their students as ambassadors. And they're they're doing a lot of things. I think their concern, similar similar to the concerns of Duke administration, are the are the students who are living off campus. That's going to be a lot harder. And we know Duke has done, you know, amazing requiring testing before students can get into their dorm rooms. Both Duke and NCCU are doing daily health screenings that students have to submit the information. And both schools are doing pledges where students have our pledging compacts for responsible behavior. But, you know, I will be honest, we've already had reports of concerned citizens seeing seeing students socializing. And so, again, we're going, and I know it's a concern for the administrations themselves, and so we're just going to really have to work together for students to understand that what they do is going to impact everybody in our community. I mean, you know, our seniors, our children, everyone. And so we just, that's why the Let's Get Back on the Bull effort is important for everyone to participate in that and for for all of us to just to keep working together. So, and and you're right, Ellen, it's the calm before the storm, but we want to keep those numbers down. And Rod, is this another doctor in the family?
I I think this is this this is the performer. Most definitely.
Hi.
What she's saying is, what she's saying is bedtime.
Oh, it's bedtime. Okay, we'll let Daddy go then.
Yeah, he needs to read a story, I think.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right. Well, thank you, Rod.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, we have a number of reports, and we're just going to go through them very quickly, see if anybody has any questions. We really appreciate all of these boards and commissions that are made up of residents from the city and the county and who do just incredible job volunteering their time and their efforts and sharing their talents and skills on these boards and commissions. So I will just go through quickly to recognize each of them and to see if anyone, if any board members have questions. We have Kayla Seibel here from the Durham City County Appearance Commission. Kayla, do you do we see you? Are you here?
Good evening, Commissioners. This is Sarah Young.
Oh, hey, Sarah.
I think I'm here letting my staff liaisons have the night off, so I'll be happy to do my best to answer questions. I'm not them, but I'll do my best.
Thank you, Sarah, for standing in for Kayla. Any comments on the City County Appearance Commission report? Okay, well, thank you, and please pass on our gratitude for for all their great work. Next, we have the Durham Open Space and Trails Commission Annual Report. And do we have Carl Kalasna here, or are you, Sarah, taking this again?
I'm sorry to disappoint, but it's all of them, I think.
All of them.
Okay, and Ellen, I believe you're a member of DOST, is that right?
Not anymore. I I was for.
Okay.
Twenty years or something.
Is it you, Heidi, Commissioner Carter or Commissioner?
Hey.
James.
Hey. It's me.
Oh, okay, you're the member, okay.
Sure.
So any any comments or questions about the DOST report? Well, just as always, fantastic report. This group is so hardworking and accomplishes so much. So again, thank you, Sarah, on behalf of all of our board, to all the members of DOST for their great work. We have the Board of Adjustment Annual Report, and do we have Jessica here, or is it you also, Sarah?
You get both of us this evening.
Okay. Okay, Jessica Dockery. And any comments or questions for the Board of Adjustment?
I'm available if you have questions for me, but I think it's pretty straight forward. I'll be glad to answer any question.
I don't hear any, so thank you, Jessica, again, for the work of the Board of Adjustment.
You're welcome. Good evening.
And then we have the Durham Planning Commission Annual Report. And we have Grace Smith here with us, with you, Sarah.
You can call me Grace Smith if you want to. Sure.
Okay. So any comments or questions from Commissioners Planning Commission? Well, we know what great work the Planning Commission does. We all really rely on them and value their comments. I did have one question. I noticed on the report that staff does not make a recommendation on rezonings anymore, or at least most of them. I guess we don't get a lot of those, so I didn't notice that. Can you explain that, Sarah?
Sure, that actually has not been the case for many, many years. I don't remember what year that went into effect, but staff per ordinance just makes a determination whether the rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan and with any applicable UDO standards. So that was a change, and I'm sorry, I don't know when that changed, but it was many, many years ago.
Okay, certainly since I was on the Planning Commission.
Yep.
But thank you. And I did want to note that on the attendance chart, there were two absences that were not color color coded, just to let you know that.
Yes, Grace Smith passed that along to me.
Oh, she noticed already, too. Okay.
Yep.
All right. Well, thank you so much for being here for the Durham Planning Commission. And we have also the Historic Preservation Commission Annual Report. And again, Sarah, and I don't know if Carla Rosenberg is here, too, but any comments or questions for Historic Preservation Commission? Okay, well, again, very grateful for the Historic Preservation Commission work, and I think that was all of our reports, and thank you, Sarah. Thank you so much for standing in in so many roles, including.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you all for supporting the boards and commissions. They do great work, and we are very fortunate to have them serving this community and working with the staff.
Absolutely. All right, so the next item that we have on our agenda tonight is discussion of the Community Safety and Wellness Task Force. And I just am looking for my own. I have so many papers sitting here to see if I can find my notes related to this. Okay, one second. Sorry about this. So this item we talked about a few weeks ago, and we were supposed to discuss it last week and we at our work session, and we did not have enough time, because we had a very long meeting. And I just wanted to draw everyone's attention to the revised bylaws. And I just wanted to draw everyone's attention to the revised bylaws that we are really considering tonight. I want to thank all of our staff who had input into this, as well as Commissioner Recal for putting a lot of work into this. And just to note that these revised bylaws now have really changed in Section 2. Well, the mission is, you know, a joint community-led task force charged with examining the public safety and wellness needs of Durham residents and communities, educating residents on existing safety and wellness resources, providing recommendations for additional programs to enhance public safety and wellness that rely on community-based prevention, intervention, and reentry services as alternatives to policing and the legal criminal legal system duties of the task force. And these, a lot of these here were from input from Gudrun and others, but focusing on conducting a comprehensive review of existing institutional and community-based public safety and wellness resources. And then doing like a gap analysis and making recommendations related to what were needed new resources. And then the listening sessions, three listening sessions in the first 90 days. And then a public meeting after the release of recommendations. Again, it's about discussing these issues, gathering information from residents and educating the public about existing resources. And also to provide quarterly written reports on any action steps and deliverables to the governing bodies. And then specifically evaluating the feasibility and making recommendations for implementation to Durham City Council, Board of County Commissioners, Public Schools, and the Durham County District Attorney's Office. And that would include related to school safety and wellness programs in every Durham County middle school and high school, law enforcement and court diversion programs, alternative sentencing, options for individuals with substance use or mental health disorders and related charges. And looking at an expanded violence interrupter program, which trains formerly justice-involved residents to intervene in situations of violence to prevent escalation and possibly including a core cohort specializing into domestic violence to focus on intervention and prevention. And then also looking at community nonviolence, mental health, first aid, de-escalation training programs focusing on residents who are most likely to be victims or perpetrators of violence. And then lastly, looking at an on-call crisis response, which would allow certain calls for police assistance to be handled by other trained professionals such as social workers, crisis counselors, psychiatric nurses, et cetera. On the other portion that was changed and that is in these bylaws are that we would be designating five members, one from our public health board, one from the sheriff's advisory board, one from the criminal justice advisory committee, justice involved, and juvenile crime prevention council, justice involved, and then one at large position. And then lastly, a community resource panel to support the work of the task force with the county, Durham County Sheriff, Police Chief, CJRC Director, DPS Superintendent, Public Health Director, someone from Alliance Behavioral Health, either a crisis response or Family Justice Center Director, JCPC Director, EMS, paramedic director, and Durham District Attorney, and whoever else could be expanded. So that, those are the main things that are, that we are putting forth as revised bylaws to then, to move forward. And I'm just going to open it up at this point. The status of things is that the school board has approved the bylaws that they had received, but they had asked that their membership go from three to five, so that we would each be appointed five. So I'll just stop here and, and bring this back before our board for any comments from or questions for Commissioners. Okay, well, I wanted to give, I know that both at our last discussion, Commissioner Howerton, you had a number of concerns. And I just wanted to see if you had any other thoughts at this time, or if you had a chance to get any more information, or just where, where you were at right now. And also Commissioner Hill, just to give both of you a chance to let us all know, you know, what your thoughts are at this time.
Madam Chair. My thoughts are still pretty much the same. You know, every time I turn the news on and there's another child murdered in Durham, I, I cannot honestly vote for something that says that it is not two years that we need more research done around black and brown children when they're dying in the streets. This, this, to me, this, this, another task force, another task force, where the community has not had an opportunity to weigh in. Some of the community, a very small portion of the community has weighed in, but the overall, I don't understand what the rush is here. And, you know, where I stand with it, it, it's supposed to be a community plan. I expect it to be a community plan. This doesn't tell me that. And I've asked, and I've asked, and I still haven't gotten those answers. So I'm still sitting and searching for the answers. They haven't shown up yet. And, and I, and you guys are rushing something that the community hasn't vetted and is supposed to be the community's plans, or how is that? So I, I'm still there.
Okay, thank you. And then Commissioner Hill?
Yes, I mean, I'm pretty much at the same place I was in our last conversation about this, this topic. So, you know, my, my, my thoughts haven't, haven't really changed. And I, I just keep hearing from people in, in Durham who, who as Commissioner Howerton said, they, they aren't on board with it.
Okay, thank you. And I also, I spoke to the sheriff last night and I wanted to give him a chance to share his thoughts. Sheriff Burkett, are you here with us? Maybe he's not here. Okay, just want to check again. Monica, is Sheriff Burkett with us?
Yeah, I'm here. I just couldn't get unmuted.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, I had a problem getting unmuted.
Well, we've, we've all had that experience.
Good evening, Commissioners. And as Chairwoman Jacobs indicated, we had a chat on yesterday. And I think I've spoken to each and every one of you on this topic over the last month or so. And I, I too am struggling with the necessity of another task force to evaluate a situation to me right now that is critical. Today, we had three homicides. Over the weekend, we had additional shootings. It's, it's a daily occurrence. We know that there are a number of things that need to be done, but to take another 24 months to formulate, excuse me, formulate a task force to come back and make recommendations that have already been made, in my opinion, over the last five years, if not longer. If you go back to the 2017 or 2018 Human Relations Commission Report, the most recent race equity report, committee report that they, they published. We've been down this road before, so I'm, I'm struggling to, to see what the difference in this approach will be, or what is different with this approach. So as I shared with, with Commissioner Jacobs on yesterday, I simply cannot support this. I think there's great work already being done. I think we need to harness that energy and create a greater synergy around some of the great work that various groups are doing, along with CJRC, Religious Coalition for Nonviolent Durham, and so forth and so on. There are others out there doing great work. I think it would be a waste of time and a race, waste of resources at this particular time to move forward with this task force.
Okay, well, thank you, Sheriff. Any other Commissioners want to comment at this point? Commissioner Recal?
Well, I want to thank the sheriff for his comments. And Ms., Sheriff, I would ask that you join the City County Committee meeting tomorrow. I think it would be important for the City Council to hear your comments related to this. And as I was sitting here, and we're talking about safety and wellness, it, it just brought back memories for me where I served as co-chair for almost four years, the, for the mayor's anti-poverty crime and safety committee. I, I co-chaired that. And when I think, and it goes, it harkens back to what Commissioner Howerton was talking about, is that when we listened to what residents in the community wanted, and some of them attended our work group meetings regularly, they actually wanted more of a police presence in their community. And they, they even went beyond that. And part, some of our recommendations directly reflected it. They wanted police to be incentivized to live in Durham. They wanted them to be incentivized to live in inner-city neighborhoods. And we actually made recommendations about that. But what our recommendations were reflecting what the community was directly saying. They wanted, they couldn't understand why the city couldn't provide lower-cost housing in some of the redevelopment areas for police. And actually, they did start a program that allowed, I believe, take-home cars for police if they lived in the city of Durham as an incentive to have them live. But I'm just saying that, you know, what we did is we listened and then we brought forward recommendations directly from people who were impacted, some of the most severely of any residents in our community by crime. These were the people who were experiencing it daily. And they wanted speed humps in their neighborhoods, but renters can't, at least at that time, couldn't petition for speed hump. And we recommended that those, those rules be changed. I could go on and on, but we listened. We took, we absorbed, and then we brought forward ideas, for what it's worth.
So I think obviously we don't have consensus on our board around this issue. I, I do want to note, I do support the task force and the concept. I, I think that, I agree, there have been efforts over time, but we've heard a lot of clamoring and voices who do support this. We've heard a lot, a lot of people in our community over the past month who do support this. And I think within the context of Black Lives Matter and what's been happening, there is a desire for people in the community to have some way now to have their voices heard. And I, from, from my perspective, that's what this task force represents, is a chance for the community to participate and, and be involved in this discussion. I, I think it is important for law enforcement to be involved as a partner with, you know, the, that's why I thought the resource panel was a great idea. Because, you know, efforts like a crisis response is, most of our efforts at diversion are, are done in partnership with, with law enforcement to be effective. But I think that, you know, from my perspective, this, this is a chance to look at what, what people are doing around the country, what are some ideas, what are some best practices? We know we have to do things immediately. I completely agree with you, Commissioner Howerton. We have a crisis in our community and there's a lot of different reasons that that's happening and we need to address them. But I, I think the focus is on, on, for this, when I read through all of the different, that's, you know, part of the bylaws that I started reading, those are looking at what are some non-law enforcement approaches to wellness and to safety and health that we can implement. So, but I understand that we're not there and I, I definitely agree, we should, we need to be, need to be on accord on this. And I recognize that, that there's, you know, unease with members of our board on this. So I, it seems like this is just something for us not to be able to, to move over with this right now. Seems to be that's the consensus at this time. And it is going to be on the joint city-county agenda tomorrow, because I know the city wanted to hear, you know, an update from us. And so that's where we're at right now. Commissioner Carter?
Yeah.
I was just going to say that I, I wonder how it's going to be able to work practically without county participation. You know, how to have a discussion about safety and wellness and sort of community-based strategies and interventions. They all, they all, how to do that without involving the county. I mean, even if you just look at the resource panel, almost every suggested participant on that panel is within county government. So I'm just not sure practically how the task, you know, are we not, are we saying we're not going to participate in the task force that is going to be formed by the city and the school district? What are we saying if we don't move forward with this in some fashion in partnership with the city and the school district? I also think the bylaws are much better, you know, the ones that Ellen and others worked together with Gillian, maybe, I think. And I think we've improved the bylaws, the language around, you know, what the task force will sort of delve into regarding school, school safety and diversion programs and violence interrupters. I like the wording better now, you know, after getting the input from our staff. It feels like county input is going to be vital for this work to go forward in any sort of way.
So, so I'd like to comment to what you're saying, Heidi. You know, we have violence interrupters already. You know, there's so many things on that list we already have. We don't need a task force to get work done. You know, it's gotten to be the name for everything is that we got to have a task force. We don't have to have a task force to get work done. And, and we don't have to have a task force to bring in creative ideas from around the, And we don't have to have a task force to bring in creative ideas from around the country. We've been doing that. We've gotten all kinds of awards and certificates about national awards, about bringing in new innovative things. So I'm just not, I'm just not there with that we have to have a task force to do the work. Our staff does the work. And they can always, and they're always looking for new and innovative ways to do different things. So I, I'm, I just don't, I don't get all of this task force stuff.
I will say, one thing I actually did like about the task force, and I mentioned this to the sheriff when we were talking, and I very much appreciated Sheriff Perkhead reaching out to me. I like the fact that the task force will be helping educate, you know, members of our community about just what you said, Commissioner Howerton, some of the excellent programs that we currently have going on that are either partnerships with law enforcement or don't involve law enforcement as ways of promoting community safety, including the violence interrupters. We might also want to include our, what basically is a co-responder model, where we have, you know, sheriff deputies trained in crisis intervention, and they go out with behavioral health specialists to work in our community to promote safety and wellness. So part of the task force's responsibilities, according to these bylaws, is to do a survey of those, highlight those, and talk to us about ways we might expand those. I just don't see any problem with doing any of those things. And I do worry about the county not being part of something that the city and the school board are moving forward on. They will be talking about a lot of services the county provides. I assume we will still want the people that we listed as resource persons to be available to answer questions that come up, but they just won't be part of it, you know, won't be affiliated in any way officially with the task force. We can work through some of these things tomorrow, perhaps. It doesn't matter to me if we vote or not vote. You know, if we vote, I am supportive of this. And I don't, I am disappointed that it seems like it's, it's something that's, in some way, has a lot of animosity towards law enforcement. I don't, I personally don't envision it that way. I think that, you know, what Ellen described about how the task force that she co-chaired backed with the mayor's poverty reduction initiative, you know, they went out and listened to the community and put recommendations in place. I also think this task force will do three listening sessions now, today, you know, to currently gather more information. And I would like for the work to be not unfriendly towards law enforcement. And I think our community does need to grapple with, in order to reduce violence, do we need to invest more in law enforcement, or do we want to invest less in law enforcement? You know, I don't think we're going to decide that. The task force, we think some about that. It'll be one voice.
Ms. Recko.
So Heidi, I appreciate your comments. I was struck, you know, I did spend a fair amount of time trying to carve out a compromise position. But I was struck after word got out to folks in the community who support the task force about the compromise, how many emails that we got objecting, well, first they objected that there was going to be law enforcement as executive members. And then objected when it got changed, and they were only going to be a community resource panel, so they'd be in the room but not part of the task force. And the very strong strident objections to having representatives of the sheriff and police in the room, that made me concerned about what exactly the intentions and goals are. Because I was excited about, you know, creating a big tent, having key players together, having good interchange of information, people learning from other people, and charting, you know, revisiting things, charting perhaps some interesting, fresh course for our community in a few key areas. But the reaction and the stridency sobered me a little bit in terms of the prospects. Because if people are that close-minded, I wasn't sure how it would work out. I'm just, I'm putting my cards on the table. I was concerned.
I guess I was thinking we have some control over that because we make the appointments, you know, of people to the task force. So there will be a variety of voices. I get what I was thinking. I hear you, though. I do hear you. We have indeed heard from a lot of people who are very vociferous about, you know, official participation of law enforcement.
Well, I appreciate everyone's comments. And I think that, to me, it does reinforce what one of the values of the task force would be, which is that these are important issues. My cat's getting right here. Important, it's an opportunity to bring people together to talk about these things. And I hear Commissioner Howerton when she says, you know, two years is too long. I mean, maybe the timeline should be shorter. You know, a lot of task forces are only one year. And I think that's, you know, whether there's the possibility to have it, you know, do their work in a quicker amount of time, considering the urgency of some of these issues. The pre-K task force that we did, how long did they meet for? Does anyone remember?
I think it was all. What I remember is that we were not in a pandemic. We were not having, using up resources to keep people alive and try to keep resources to feed people. We weren't in the situation that we are in right now. We are in a dire situation right now. And then to, on top of that, every day, there's another person killed in our community. So how do we justify, how do we justify resources? And I don't mean just money, I mean, resources in our staff time that is so needed. I mean, our staff has been working 24/7. We're talking about pulling on resources financially and personnel to do something that's not going to save nobody's life for maybe two years from now. Well, I'm not, I'm not willing to wait. I'm not willing to sit around talking. There's, we've had so much research done on black and brown people. You could fill a library. We know what we need. So more research doesn't do it for me.
Okay, so I think we've had a good conversation, and I think at this point we've reached an impasse. And so I will, unless, you know, anybody wants to bring this back at a future date or we have more information, or we can talk about it again in the future. Is that consensus with everybody at this point? Okay, all right. So we will, okay, we need to quickly get into closed session. Let me look at our agenda here. And our board is requested to adjourn into closed session for the following, to establish or to instruct the public body's staff or negotiating agents concerning the position or to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option exchange, or lease, or the amount of compensation or other material terms of an employment contract or proposed employment contract pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A5, and to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Recko, seconded by Commissioner Howerton. And we'll take a voice vote, starting with Commissioner Carter.
Aye.
Commissioner Hill.
Aye.
Ms. Recko.
Aye.
Commissioner Howerton.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so we're unanimously adjourned to closed session. Thank you, everyone who's been in the meeting with us. Have a good night, and we will go to the link for the closed session. Thank you. Where is the closed session? Zoom? Closed session. I don't know what.
This is like playing checkers.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Howerton, seconded by Commissioner Reckow, with a voice vote, starting with Commissioner Howerton.
Yes.
Commissioner Reckow.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Carter. I'm a yes, and we are unanimously adjourned and see everybody at nine o'clock in the morning for our joint city-county meeting. Good night. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Monica, CEO, and everybody. Thanks so much. Good night.